All right, I will call the meeting to order. I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Clerk Saturn Rocco?
Trustee Nierdowski?
Present.
Trustee Keenly. Trustee Wotecki. Trustee Dante.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
Present. And just a comment, trustees Wotecki and Keenly both called in, they're sick. And I told them that if they're not feeling well, then they feel they're sick not to attend, particularly in the current environment. Okay, any public comment? None? Okay, the consent agenda, authorization for payroll, bills for the town fund, general assistance, road department, sewer, and then the slew of my reports that we put out there. Is there any questions or any problems with the bills?
No.
Are there any questions or problems on any of the other issues? If not, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Okay. Rocco?
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye. Okay, now we have the minutes for September 27th, the regular board meeting. Does anybody have any issues with it? If not, if I motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Rocco?
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye. Okay, next is presentations. Just two comments right up front. The finance and administrative presentations that we were expecting from the staff, for educational purposes for the trustees, we've delayed those since two of the board members are missing. And we'll reschedule one of them. I think finance for next month along with the bus, the transportation, yeah, bus, the bus, transportation presentation, then the next month we'll put administration into that. So at this time, if we can go ahead with, is it Chuck?
Yes, sir.
Chuck, Chuck Guswin?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Should be Goosefine.
It may have been back there.
Okay, all right. All right, is our, do their audit presentation? So, the floor is yours.
We completed our audit. I'd like to start by saying the opinion. The financial statements of the township were fairly stated, so we issued a clean opinion. The government-wide statements indicate the long-term assets, like the township building. Moving on to the fund financial statements, we often look at the ending fund balance, and the township ended in a healthy position. I also want to note with the general town fund that the expenditures were down somewhat from the prior year. Moving on to the notes, I want to point out in the cash note that all the deposits of the township were collateralized or insured, meaning all the deposit, all the cash of the township was safe. And finally, the pension note, IMRF indicates that the township has a net pension asset, which should translate to lower rates that the township pays in for its IMRF participants. And we completed the audit, and the filing with the Illinois Comptroller is complete and has been filed, and copies have been sent to the township office.
Does anybody have any questions? I think congratulations to Erica, she's on the phone, and Paul for a clean audit. And thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
You don't want to stay? Run, run, run away. Okay, Michael, with the Mezro Insurance Services for our health insurance update for 2022. If you remember, he made his presentation last week. I think there was a consensus that we stick with the same, basically the same policies or programs that we had last year. And I think that this question, does anybody have any questions? You've had a month to review this since his presentation. Does anybody have any questions for him?
No.
Okay, if you could, Mike, if you just could review again that particular program, what that will, what we will be voting, if we decide to vote, what we'd be voting to approve?
Sure. Supervisor Bussie, fellow trustees, it's great to see everybody again. So to reiterate what we talked about last month, kind of generally speaking, we talked about some COVID-19 updates. We talked about a United Healthcare quote, which I think we really dug into and maybe thought that probably was not the best fit for the township for many reasons. And I think what we'll talk about today is just the financials behind Blue Cross, what the increase looks like in terms of dollars, and how that would affect the staff. So if everyone takes out their packet that we looked at last week, to reiterate on the current offering with Blue Cross, you know, the township has an HMO and two high deductible plans that employees can choose from. Towards the back of the packets, there are two pages, one that outlines the employee versus the employer contributions in terms of percentages, and then the last sheet outlines the total dollars. So build premium, what the township would be picking up, and then what the employees would be responsible for. So as a summary, the township picks up 95% of the employee-only premium. And with age-banded rates, that's a different number for everybody. But the township picks up 95%. The employee is responsible for 5%. That's only if they're covering themselves. For those that are covering dependents, the township picks up 50% of the additional cost to cover dependents, leaving the employees responsible for the other 50%. And then towards the back, what we put together was a total cost spreadsheet. So that's this one right here. Looks like a little table. And towards the, towards the bottom of it is in yellow and in orange, we are outlining the total cost in terms of dollars. So currently, the township's billed about $205,000 a year annually for health insurance premiums, of which the township picks up about $165,000 of it, and $39,000 of that total are employee contributions. If the township renews with Blue Cross, with the three plans that we talked about, the total build premium goes up to $218,000 a year. The township picks up $176,000 of that premium, and the employees are responsible for $41,000 of it. So to the township, if we keep contributions the same, the same splits, that 95-5 and 50-50 that I just talked about, build premium to the township and what you guys are responsible for goes up about $11,000 a year. Now, in addition to that, there's also some HSA seed contributions. So for employees that enroll into either of the HSA programs, the township contributes dollars towards the employees' HSA accounts. That is $43,000 annually to the township. And if you kept those same numbers going into the renewal, it would continue to be $43,000 a year. I know I went through that pretty quickly, but does anybody have any questions for me?
Daniel, Vince?
Uh-uh.
There's no questions? I guess what we're, obviously what he's, what we've, what I feel the consensus that's running here, and we don't vote on it right now, is that, and these are the programs that specifically have questions for him, is the P506 PSN Platinum HMO, the S534 PPO Silver HSA, and the S507 OPT Silver Blue Options HSA. Why do they have such difficult names? Why don't they just call it red, blue, and green or something like that?
That would probably be easier. Next year I'll do that.
Yeah. So this, this is, this is, this is basically the same as last year. The only difference is, is basically the increase, an increase in price.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any, if there's no other questions, thank you, Michael.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mike, Alicia, is he?
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for your time. I am pleased to present your property and casualty renewal for the December 1st of 2021 through 22. And I say pleased because your renewal is probably one of the only renewals that I am presenting this year that is going to come with an actual premium decrease. The municipal insurance market is extraordinarily volatile. A lot has to do with the profitability of carriers over the last few years. And overall, the negative impact that the May events last year had caused the municipal insurance market, even though you don't have police or fire exposures. Looking at your losses, you are pretty clean. There is a large auto claim from the 1819 year that sticks out. Little public officials claim, nothing major. You've been with this carrier for a number of years, and while we've marketed it to other carriers numerous times over the years, Illinois County's Risk Management Trust continues to have the most comprehensive and cost-effective program. And so we've developed a relationship with them, and the township has developed a relationship. When you have large losses like that, they know that you guys are working hard to prevent them. And when it comes to renewal time, I truly believe they don't allow those losses to negative affect you as much as you would be with a carrier for one or two years. This carrier makes it very easy for an insured and myself to work with them. Worker's comp, pretty clean. Little hiccup in the 2020 year, there was one large claim in that year that will affect you unfortunately for another two years. And that's just how the worker's comp calculation is calculated nationally. Moving on from the losses, I'm at the premium summary page. So you'll see a little uptick in the top with your package. The main reason for the increase is slight property value increase as well as just market conditions. The other aspect contributing to your increase is cyber. Your outsourced IT, Erica, Paul and I spent a lot of time completing these cyber applications this year. As you're well aware, you probably have read about some well-known cyber-related hacks. Those hacks continue. There was news today that there are some Russians that are purposely looking to hack US-based companies. I heard a number that there are a million hackers trying to get into various US infrastructure. Not sure where they're based. We suspect, or the media suspected, in Russia and in, I'm sorry, one of my daughters is, honey, could you please? Okay, sorry about that. So unfortunately, the cyber market is really tough right now. Cyber premiums are doubling and tripling, and municipalities are a target due to their limited budgets to implement the super-secure protocols that large multinational companies are able to implement. And actually, those companies are getting hacked as well. So it's unfortunate. But we were able to enhance your cyber limit to, from $100,000 last year to $1 million this year with a $5,000 deductible on that. And the overall package increase is 6.58%. Good news on the workers' compensation is your premiums went down, even with that claim, and that is the result of a, some rate decreases for you, which are nice. Usually what we're seeing are rate increases as the COVID-related claims are hitting us, but those are mainly in the police and fire areas. We're thankful you do not have an exposure. And I'm pleased to present a 2.89% overall premium reduction.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
I just, to explain it to me again, our, our worker's comp went down that dramatically despite, for the, one of the first times, a significant worker's comp claim. Is this, is this something that we'll end up having to pick up? Will we, will that hurt us in terms of premiums down the line? Or is this, is this, I guess I just need to understand a little better why we're getting such a great deal there.
Sure. I'm looking into your comp right now. Bear with me a second. So your payroll slightly went down this past year. And one of the things with regards to that last claim is that since it is new, we call it green. It is, it is slightly discounted, so where it is not actually affecting you as much this year. It could develop to our advantage over the next year and hopefully reduce your, your overall exposure of that claim. So they are able to discount that, which, you know, is, is good for an insured. It helps an insured rather than penalize them right off the bat.
Okay. All right, does anybody have anything else? I mean, I think that's, it's good to see that our costs have gone down. I don't think we want to lift a gift horse in the mouth here, but, but I, I think that's, that's, that's really good news. You rarely see that.
Yeah.
So are there any other questions? Otherwise, thanks a lot, Mike.
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay, thanks. Okay.
Okay.
As I said, we've postponed the presentations by the, by Erica and the finance department, and we postponed Paul's presentation on administration due to the fact we have two trustees missing. The finance, once again, will be in next month, November, and the administration will add to the December meeting. Okay, we'll go to reports. Assessor Karasewi?
You have my written report. The only thing I have to add to that is that Deputy Wagner and I will be attending the Cook County Township assessors. I'll attend the board meeting, and we'll both attend the general meeting and try and figure out what's going on with the county. Always a challenge.
Okay.
So if you have any questions about my written report, I'll be happy to answer them.
Is there any questions for Connie?
No.
No? Okay, Clerk Saturn?
You have my written report. We had one FOIA request from Channel 5, and the filing, the levy documents for 2021 were filed with Cook County. The other thing is, if you haven't let Paul know, if you do want to attend the virtual TOI conference in November, please let him know that you would like to attend.
Okay, thank you. The supervisor's report. So I want to, right off the bat, I want to thank Paul and Vince and Dick for helping out with the shredding day that we did in connection with the Mount Prospect Lions Club. We had 170 cars and about 10 tons of shredding. To be honest with you, that is a little lower than we thought, but I think it's a very good start. And a number of the people indicated that they really were excited that we would maybe be doing this annually. It's just not as commonly done by the banks and some of their other institutions anymore. So I think this is a great opportunity for us to work with a community organization and provide a service that I think is real value-added. We're looking at doing it with Mount Prospect Lions Club every, every fall, and we're now in discussions with Elk Grove, Oak Grove Village Lions Club to do one in spring, and that would be at this, on this property, on our property here, while the last one was at the Rexplex in Mount Prospect. On the remediation front, we were waiting for this building for a final legal opinion by our attorneys to make sure that we have all the documentation we need, and that we are comfortable with, with acknowledging to the village that we're ready to move forward. We do believe that the situation has been resolved and that we are now open, or able to move forward with the construction of the, of the challenge course, the, the bike safety, and perhaps even a new bathroom in the back. That will not be until spring, however, now, since this ran, ran late. On the 2400 on Arlington Heights Road, our old building, I don't know if I mentioned to you all that we did get a notification that there was an incident, or they call it a reference number outstanding that had not been resolved, that was 30 years old. Leave it for the state, leave it to the government to bring something up 30 years later. I, I assume it's because they were, they were working on this problem with us and the village, and that just came up. In any case, we've been in touch with our attorneys, and in their opinion, we no longer have ownership of that property or have responsibility for the environmental issues that may be, that may, may come into play there. I don't think it's a significant, a real significant issue. I don't think it'll lead to a major remediation issue, but nonetheless, it appears we, we do not have responsibility. And we will be sending a letter from our attorneys into the IEPA explaining our, explaining our position that it's not our property, not our responsibility anymore. And I would assume that will be accepted. On the budget, we're getting close to budget time. I know the agency grant committee is working hard. I know that the department heads are starting to put together their proposed budgets that will be submitted to Paul and Erica. And then, then at that point, I'll get involved. And then what we'll be doing is, is presenting the tentative, putting out the tentative budget in January. There'll be some discussion of that at the January meeting. Then in February, we'll have a hearing. And if there are no issues, we'll vote on approving the budget at that meeting. Oh, no, I'm sorry, we'll vote on the tentative at that meeting. And then in March, we would have the final approval. So tentative review in January, a hearing and tentative vote in February, and then the final approval in March is the, is the, is the likely schedule that we'll be following. One other issue, Paul, do you want to say a few words on Repolo, Repolo, in terms of where that's, where that's going?
Well, we've been working with the Sheriff's Department and have got a lot of progress made with that. We've talked to specifically one of their sergeants who's been really engaging. He's gone out to talk to the people in that area, and I think he's given them a feeling of comfort that something's going on, that we're actually doing something about it. He actually put a proposal together for some signs to go throughout that neighborhood. And George and I reviewed those. So, you know, we're trying to get to the point where we can possibly get the people that live there, the Sheriff's Department, the village, and us together, just to kind of put everybody in their room and come up with a plan where we can kind of try to get this thing resolved. Also, the gentleman from the Sheriff's Department was out and visited the businesses, the commercial businesses that are there that are probably causing some of the, the issues over there with the trucks, and, you know, there's controversy about that. So it's going forward. I mean, we've made a lot of progress in just a couple months, and I think probably in the next few months, we should be able to hopefully put a pin in this thing and be done with it. That's what it sounds like.
Paul, so this is in response to Heather, correct?
I did, I couldn't hear.
She, that's in response to Heather, the lady who came in?
Yeah, yeah.
And so she's aware of all of this, that's being done?
The, yeah, I had talked to her, I think I'd even sent her an email when we first got to that point, before we even got to doing very many things, before we got the ball rolling. And the gentleman from the Sheriff's Department's been out there to meet with, like I said, the businesses and the people that are there. I had given him Heather's name and, what's the other lady's name, Dawn. And he said that he had met with them and actually with Heather's husband as well one time when she wasn't there. So he's been talking to the neighborhood, and, yeah, they're aware what's going on. Yeah.
I'd like to say that I think Paul's done a nice job with this, and we're really, really appreciative of what the Cook County Sheriff's Department is doing. They've really stepped up and gotten involved with us. And I think what it just took is somebody, which was us, to go ahead and try to really initiate something rather than just kicking it down the road, which unfortunately, I think some of the people they've reached out before have done. We, we do not have enforcement responsibility. We only have maintenance or repair responsibility there, though they are our residents in the unincorporated area. And as a result, we need to do as much as we can to help them work through this. But it will require the cooperation of Cook County and the village to succeed and really, I would say, coming up with a solution. And that's why we want to have, get everybody finally together. Once we, once the Sheriff's Office and we feel comfortable that we have a reasonable plan, and then if we can get them with us and the village in here, because the village is going to have to play too, and then the residents, then we can lay out, okay, here's where we are, here's who can do what. And, and, and at that point, I don't want to say we passed the ball, but there's only so much we can do. And at that point, I think we will have done everything we can. And then it's going to be up to the village and the county.
Yeah, I think the signing issue was a big deal because that's what they had come in asking for, and three-way stops, you know, where those roads only go so far, and then they T-bone into the, the ones that go north and south. That's what they were asking for, was for stop signs being put there. And that was part of the plan that the sheriff drew up. So I think he did a great job. I mean, he was easy to work with. He came over and we gave him a tour of the building, and he spent a long time in the adult and family counseling area. He said, oh my gosh, he said that the county has something like this. And he said, you know, if we run into people in your township, we can tell them to come here now instead of taking them and sending them someplace else. So it was, he was very excited about just, you know, knowing what we did. So it was a good, it was a good contact.
Okay.
It is, Paul?
Thank you, Paul.
All right, we're also, in the VS, for the Veteran's Service Office, we will have our Veteran's Service Director or Veteran's Service Officer beginning his, opening up the office and beginning providing services starting next week, this week.
I think it's supposed to be on Wednesday.
When he's going to be doing Wednesdays and Thursdays?
I think he's, they, they've been back and forth, but the last that I've heard it was going to be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Okay.
And then he wants, the gentleman that's going to be here wants to turn it into a full-time office. So it'll be your five days a week. It's his goal.
Okay. Is there, do you think, would it be possible to see if he'd be willing to come to our next meeting and introduce himself and talk a little bit about what he's doing?
Yeah.
Well, let's invite him to do that. And if he can't, then maybe we can still try to set up a lunch where whoever can make it can come in here and sit down and talk to him. So we're, so we're familiar, we know him, and we're familiar with what services and what they'll be doing. I have a good idea, but I think it's good, I'd like to know more detail, and I think it's good for the board to know. I think this is a really positive development we have here in that this is a, this is a, this is, these are valuable services, and this is the state of Illinois that we're working in there. So they're, they're very, they're very professional and very, very effective in what they do. So I'm glad we're able to add this. One other program that we'll be starting this year, what's new, is the SHIP program. That's where we work, we have, we're going to arrange for volunteers that'll work with seniors and trying to go through their Medicare, their insurance, and identifying what they should be, how they should be registering, what they should be doing, what, what, what insurance would be best for them or not best for, or not good to not use. And we're just trying to get that. or not best for, or not good to not use. And we're just trying to get that program kicked off. I'm not sure how much we'll be able to do this year, but certainly we'll be able to do enough so that as we go in the next year, we're going to be in a lot better shape. And that's another senior service that we're kind of adding here. And then, finally, Vince was, Vince talked to me today about, you know, well, maybe we can provide in addition to shredding, some other services related to that, that our residents just don't have access to all the time, and that was electronics and hazardous waste and, and plastics and things like that. And we're exploring that. We're getting, we're, we're going to take a look at whether that is feasible, whether we're duplicating other services that other people find or do, and whether it's financially workable. But I liked the idea that he came up with these ideas, and anytime anybody can think of something which makes sense for us to consider, that where there's a gap or a hole that our citizens can use, particularly in this area of social services, which is rather broad, and within the, the, the area of, of, of communities, just general community services, that's where our, that's where our primary responsibility is now, particularly as the road and bridge has become more minor. And then, of course, the tax service is, is a standalone, unique service that we have that is really also key. I don't know. Does anybody else have any questions of me right now?
I had a question back on the clerk's report.
Get it?
So Ellen, based on this, this FOIA request, is, is this the first time we've ever seen this?
I think so. Is that correct, Paul?
And is, is this something out of the ordinary?
Or what they're asking for?
Yes. Yes.
Not really. There's some groups that, that send employees every year for the same, exact same thing. And this is the first time I've ever seen that. Doesn't mean that they haven't done it before, but I don't recall seeing it. Some of them, you get used to seeing. There's television stations, and there's other people that have been doing that for a long time. They just find one thing, and they just blend with the area.
Okay. So this, has it been some identified?
No. There's no background.
They're just seeing what they can find.
Okay.
This is, we, we fairly regularly see FOIAs from different watchdog groups that are, that are monitoring multiple government agencies in, in, in various ways, and we'll get regular FOIAs from them concerning either the same thing or different things. But this is sort of unique. I don't think I've ever seen anything from a, a media outlet per se.
We've, we've had media before, but it's interesting as far as what they're requesting because it's something the state already does.
Yeah.
So, I mean...
That's why I brought it, that's why I brought the question up, because I started reading it. I had to read it two or three times. And, and also, you know, the, the, the idea here is that there's, you know, some unclaimed, you know, funds that, that potentially are, are, you know, due for individuals or governmental bodies, and, and so that's...
The Treasurer's Office has been criticized for sitting on funds and assets and not notifying the public that they have these, and they've come out recently, I've seen several emails where they're saying, come on the site to, to, to search for if you have anything outstanding that is, is owed you, whether it's company or individually under, you can, multiple names. And so I think that there's, I think that you've got here is this is something that's gained a little steam, and not just the watchdog groups, but some of the media is getting on top of that now.
That makes sense. Thank you.
All right. For correspondence, we have none. For old business, we have none. For new business, we need to go back to those presentations, the audit report, the health insurance, and then the property and liability insurance, and we need to address those in terms of any further discussion or anything else we need. And if we're ready, then we, we need to vote to, to approve the audit report to...
Accept.
Pardon? Except, I'm sorry, you're right. Accept the audit report to improve the, approve the insurance for next year and improve, in both health and in property. So are there any questions still on the audit report? I, you know, a clean, a clean report is the best you can do, and they had no caveats of any, of any sort on that. So I, I don't think there's really much for us to talk about. It's a very great job by Erica and by our staff. I mean, you can't ask for anything better. So is there a motion to accept the, the audit report?
So I make the motion, accept the audit report.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi?
Aye.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the health insurance for 2022. Michael went through again those policies or those options that were, were, that it looks like we have a consensus that we would, we would want to have for this year, which is basically a continuation of what we had last year. Are there any further questions on, on, on the health insurance? Or if not, can I get a motion to approve, I suppose we should, should we specifically mention those, those, those specific policies? I put it here in front of me. Now I, now I misplaced it. I guess what I need a, a motion is to accept the three policies as presented by, by Michael Balin, our, Balin, our, our, our agent this evening, rather than, and those policies would be, once again, P five oh six PSN Platinum HMO, this is Blue Cross Blue Shield, S fifty, five three four PPO Silver HSA, and the S five oh seven OPT, or option, I guess, Silver Blue Options HSA. Can I have a, a motion to approve those three options for our staff for 2022?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi?
Aye. Okay. Then the, the last thing on our agenda here is the, the 2022 Property and Liability Insurance Proposal that Mike Aliesha presented. Once again, despite a rather significant workers' comp claim, we have seen, we are seeing overall, a overall reduction in the cost of our property and our workers' compensation insurance. That's more than I had hoped for, particularly given the, the workers' comp claim. So I, I, I think that the, the policies as they're presented, I would recommend that we approve those, but I would need a motion to do so.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi?
Aye.
Do we need to approve those reports?
Oh, that's right. Well, we just accept them.
Okay.
I'm not going to worry about that.
Okay.
Okay. Is there, there is no executive session issues? I don't see anything else on the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good. You're done.